Okay.
Should be good.
Yes.
Do I need a motion to resume the meeting?
I make a motion to resume the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner O'Donnell, second by Commissioner Ritz, to continue with a public hearing. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any nays? Motion carries. Okay. Is there anybody in attendance here that wish to speak tonight at the public hearing? Please stand.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Sweeney, one thing got left out of there. Can you make a motion to start the public hearing? I would just say you're making a motion to start the public hearing and final vote on the proposed ordinance. My apologies.
I need a motion to, I thought I asked that, to have this public hearing tonight on the side ordinance. Motion?
I'll make a motion to start the public hearing.
And is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Blanchard, second by Commissioner Buckman. All in favor of the motion, please, oh, Ritz, I'm sorry. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any nays? Motion carries. Did you say nay?
No, sir, I didn't. Sorry.
Is there anybody here who wishes to speak at tonight's hearing? Please stand. Raise your right hand and repeat, and repeat after me. Do you solemnly swear to firm under the penalties of perjury and the responses given to the statements made by you in these proceedings will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth? If so, state aye do.
I do.
Thank you.
All right. That's good.
Calling of the case. According to section seventeen point forty-four dash zero-two-zero of the Town and Members Code, the mayor and board of commissioners shall hold a public hearing before adoption of any proposed amendments, supplements, or changes to the zoning ordinance. The topic of the public hearing is the proposed ordinance nineteen dash oh-three, which would repeal the existing sign code of chapter fifteen point one-six in its entirety and replace it with a proposed chapter seventeen point three-eight. We have a staff presentation?
Yes, so I'd like, first like to note that this public hearing was advertised in the Frederick News Post on July fifteenth and July twenty-second of two thousand and nineteen. It was also advertised on the town's website, Facebook, and Channel ninety-nine. So for the background of this, the town's current sign code, Town Code chapter fifteen point sixteen was originally passed in the mid nineteen nineties with small amendments throughout the years. The mayor, town staff, and the planning commission are recommending a new sign code due to modern technological advances. The proposed amendment is highly recommended by the Maryland Municipal League and the American Planning Association. It seeks to meet the needs of residents, businesses, and other organizations while protecting and enhancing the visual quality and traditional design concepts of Emmitsburg. So for the timeline, as you all know, we've been doing this for many, many months. We started back on February fourth, two thousand and nineteen. This was the first Board of Commissioners' presentations on section ten through fifty. The second Board of Commissioners' meeting to present sixty through eighty was on March fourth. We had a, we held a community outreach meeting for the village zoning district on April eighth, community outreach meeting for the institutional zone on April fifteenth, community outreach meeting for the residential zones R-one, R-two, and R-three on April twenty-second, and the final community outreach meeting on the commercial industrial B-one, B-two, IP, and ORI districts on April twenty-ninth. We sent the flyers out with the water bills, so everybody did receive a copy of that, and we also hand-delivered the flyers to the business owners.
Was there significant attendance for all of those meetings?
There was not.
Just for the...
Institutional.
Institutional and the village, correct?
There was, yeah, sure. There was moderate. So on June third, received the Emmitsburg Business Professional Association EBPA endorsement. The third Board of Commissioners' presentation of sections ninety through two-thirty was also on June third. Planning Commission presentation and recommendation vote was held on June twentieth, and tonight will be the public hearing and possible vote. At their meeting held on June twentieth, the town's planning commission unanimously, four to zero, recommended approval of proposed ordinance nineteen dash zero-three with the following comments. Number one, section seventeen thirty-eight thirty, under definitions, limited duration sign, a non-permanent sign that is displayed on private property for more than thirty days, and it also stated, but not intended to be displayed for an indefinite period. They wanted to strike, but not intended to be displayed for an indefinite period, and in its place put, but less than a hundred and eighty days. So I'll say that again, a limited duration sign, definition, a non-permanent sign that is displayed on private property for more than thirty days, but less than one hundred and eighty days, and that was the original purpose of the limited duration signs, was be less than six months. Number two, also under definitions, they wanted definitions for commercial and non-commercial to be added. I contacted Mr. Clapp, and he provided those definitions, and we did add those. Number three, the town's architectural guidelines should be added as review criteria for the following actions. Seventeen thirty-eight one sixty-D, insulation must not damage or require removal of historic materials, and this is going to be an addition, as determined by the National Park Service, Maryland Historical Trust, Towns Architectural Guidelines, or local historic commission, and must be done in a manner such that signs can be removed without harm to the masonry or architectural detailings. I think that was a comment of Mr. O'Donnell. And also, in the same line, seventeen thirty-eight two hundred E-two, it's the same exact thing. The non-conforming sign is a unique nature or type of virtue of its architectural value or design as determined by the National Park Service, Maryland Historical Trust, Towns Architectural Guidelines would be added, or local historic commissions. Lastly, this was a request from the board. They determined that internally illuminated signs should be permitted in the village zone, zoning district. These signs match the historic nature of town because they originate around the nineteen twenties, so they do wish for the signs to be illuminated, to allow illuminated signs in the village zoning district. That's all of our presentation. If there's any questions or comments, right now it would be Commissioner's questions.
Questions for staff, Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'll defer to Commissioner Buckman first.
Mr. Buckman.
So if a chain, let's say Valero or Exxon, has certain signs that is required by their chain organization or by the federal health and safety, signs marking for people's safety, is that something that is built in here so that those kinds of safety signs or chain required signage is considered?
So safety signs, yes, that's in section fifty, signs exempt from permanent requirements. Chain required signage, such as something on a roof, if that's mandatory, that wouldn't be permitted.
Okay. But it's grandfathered in if it's a current?
For an example, if there's a sign on a roof currently, yes, that would be grandfathered in.
Anything else?
Do you want to say something?
Well, I didn't stand up, but I do.
You can't do it yet.
Can you come up to the podium and state your name, and you haven't been, he hasn't been sworn in.
Can't do it.
You have to be sworn in. Can he be sworn in now?
Yes. When I prepared that, that was for what they call quasi-judicial hearings.
Oh, okay.
This is completely legislative, so you don't have to wear your wetsuit.
Okay, all righty. That's good, because I didn't remember doing that.
Yeah, that was so unusual. I was like, why is Zach standing up?
My name's Ken Kazmarski. I am the owner of the Silo Hill Exxon, which speaks to the, particularly to corporate mandated, requested signage and displays. We, Mr. Goulden and I have had numerous conversations, and with some of the designs that Exxon has come out with, and we had installed, and there are places for signs on pillars and waves, as they call them, that unfortunately, these regulations don't really address. I think that it, obviously, you need to have regulations to prohibit people doing things out of sorts with signs, but there should be some way to address something that's being done in a proper and orderly manner. Obviously, companies like Exxon, or Mobil, or I understand Rutter's is coming. There are signage, things that we need to put out so that people know programs that we're offering for credit card offerings, or for loyalty programs.
Would those be considered temporary signs, or?
No, I think, I'm sorry, Mr. Kazmarski?
Kazmarski.
Kazmarski, he's talking about things that are permanent, in a permanent nature, on the pillars.
On these pillars, there are areas to insert signage, and they would change on a regular basis. It's a rotating...
So it's not permanent, really?
Well, it, the fixture is permanent.
I'm just, the fixture is permanent.
But your signage changes.
But the signage changes quarterly, sometimes monthly. It depends upon what the specific programs are that are being offered. We have situations where vendors come to us with programs, and the only way...
Like Speedpass, or something like that?
Well, Speedpass is an Exxon-offered program, and it, you know, if you manage to go into it and study it, it's actually the safest way to buy gasoline, as far as credit card or that type of transaction, but that's an advertisement that I don't need to bring up here. But people like Coca-Cola come to us, and they present us with materials to use to...
Two for three dollars, something like that.
Two for three. We had, at a gasoline pump island, you have bollards to keep people from running into things. We had the opportunity to put some covers on there to do away with paint-chipped steel bollards that are up, and it was an advertisement. But it would not be there permanently. It comes on and goes off depending upon what the program is. The signs on the permanent sort of structures that we had put in place, they're professionally done, Exxon supplies those to us. I don't have, you know, it's not something that I can pick and choose and put in. It meets what their advertising programs are. And unfortunately, in the conversations, there isn't a way to have something like that approved if, well, it's already there, but we're just going to leave them empty. Because it's not something that I can take down.
I still don't understand if it's being taken down every month and changed to something else when that becomes a temporary sign?
That's not my, I don't make that consideration.
No, because it's a permanent fixture on the bollard, you're just changing the sign that's going in and out of it. So it's a permanent sign with changing the advertisement on a...
Others won't be able to do it either.
I know what you're talking about.
On a different basis.
I can show him a picture of what I'm, what was...
This is a column that's been put up.
Oh, yeah, I've seen it.
And there's an insert for a sign there, it's triangular in shape, and there's a place for an informational signage on the sides of it. There are two of these, and this is just for these specifically, there are two of those types of columns that are, have been installed. They also have another type of sign fixture that's on the actual canopy column that, you know, typically would have something that would advertise the type of gasoline, or right now we're...
But aren't they bollards to protect your gas thing?
The bollards?
Is that what they are? You just line a piece of plastic over the bollard?
We had a piece of Coca-Cola advertising over top of those, yes.
At the time that this was brought to our attention, he had eighty-one commercial signs. I understand that some of them are required by their chain, or the Exxon, and some of them are safety signs required.
Where were eighty-one? You're talking about like on the pumps?
Eighty-one signs throughout the property of Exxon.
Not just advertisements. How many were advertisements? How many were safety?
I don't know.
I'd like to differentiate, because eighty-one sounds like a lot, but if some, most of those are safety, then it doesn't feel so bad.
If they were safety, they contained a commercial message such as propane tank, whatever the company's name is. It wasn't just the safeties.
I didn't realize that there were eighty-one. I don't...
Yeah, I drive, I use the gas station, and I don't see eighty-one. It just feels like it would be so busy.
We personally counted them and measured each one of them. There were eighty-one signs. Just keep in mind, what you do for Exxon, then you have to do for everyone in that zoning district.
I was just thinking about, you know, corporate regulations, obviously, the propane tank, it's a benefit to the community that there's a propane distribution there, and then the company has a sign on there. I mean, it just...
The safety signs are allowed. They're not, they're not part of the calculation.
But you said eighty-one, there are safety signs there, too.
There are eighty-one total signs.
Right.
Okay, some are safety, some are advertisements. Safety signs are not taken into the account of when you start to measure the number of signs or size requirements, because that's a big part of the sign ordinance. Those are exempt in, I don't know what page it is.
Section fifty.
Section fifty of the code.
So is this fixture that he has, that he puts signs in and out of each month, that is already grandfathered in, so that's not an issue?
It's not grandfathered in.
Oh, it's not been there for a while?
It's only grandfathered if they received a legal permit to do so.
When they were installed, my contractor went to someone in Frederick County, and supposedly in Emmitsburg, and was told we didn't need a permit to put them up. So we put them up. That was done in November of seventeen, and they were installed in January of eighteen.
But we didn't have no, we didn't have, there weren't any covered then, right?
Yes, we did. At that time, there was a maximum of fifty square feet for each business. Do you want me to say this? Ken did come in, and he had a total of three hundred and sixty-eight point seven-one square feet. So he was significantly over the square footage, however. He did come in, and we did work it out.
We...
Made it right.
We have made an accommodation. I just, it's just a situation where I don't get to advertise products that we have for sale in the store. It's strictly for gasoline advertising that that's permitted.
Are you allowed to put those on your little TV?
We do, yes.
His current signage, it would conform to the new sign ordinance if it were passed. So what he has...
Current signage?
What, not the current one, the, this proposed one that you have in front of you, that what he has now, if you were to go out and look at Exxon right now, it would fall under the parameters of the proposed sign ordinance. So if that was adopted, Exxon would be in compliance with the ordinance.
Without putting any inserts in anything.
Correct, sir.
Yes, Mr. O'Donnell?
Just one thing to throw in, and I know we're trying to respect, you know, corporate culture as well as government safety issues, but one piece for consideration is, you know, regardless of the size of the corporation as an entity, as a municipality, we do have the authority to guide what we want.
No, I'm not questioning that, surely.
Okay, because you'd said corporation a few times, and I think of like...
Well, even Subway, like, has corporate...
Oh, sure, all of them, of course.
Signs and stuff, and I was just wondering how that, they jive together. I wasn't particularly pointing at him.
Sure.
Just to sort of kind of support you in what I'm getting at, like, if you look at, where
is it? Sedona, Arizona, has very restrictive signage ordinances, and one of their claims to fame is McDonald's golden arches there are the only ones in the nation that aren't golden, they're pink, because of turquoise and pink being required codes for a certain signage in the community. So, you know, it actually works out that it's a draw for them. I don't see that for Exxon necessarily.
Could the Exxon station use temporary signs, like the ones that have to be taken down within one hundred and eighty days to advertise their advertisements?
Yes, so, excuse me, can I call you Ken, please?
Yes.
Okay. Ken has a flag sign out there, for example. We consider that a limited duration sign, so he can have that up for six months, and then he could change that commercial message every six months if he wished. For temporary signs, it has to change, like, every thirty days. So he can have one temporary sign, but it has to change, and he doesn't have to get a permit for that.
When you say one sign, do you literally mean like one physical single sign, or like in the fixtures, one sign per fixture?
Let me pull the...
That exceeds the code?
Let me pull the sign code out, so I don't tell you the wrong...
Sure, sure, sure.
Things. So you want to ask, know about temporary first?
I want to understand what you just said regarding one sign.
Okay, sure.
Please.
I'll give you an example.
Okay, here we go.
Mr. Buckman's and Mr. Blanchard's sign in my front yard, I'd have two. For the, they're running for election, I could have it in there for sixty days, so...
Oh, that's exempt, that's totally different.
That's political, but I was wondering about the temporary, you know, the rule.
Sure, so that's different, because it's exempt for, per federal constitution, but for temporary signage, let me clarify, so for example, Ken could have, in a non-resident, non-residential district, he could have one per property, and if his property was over two acre, or, excuse me, if his property was over five acres, he could have two. So these are the large temporary signs, so thirty-two square feet for banners, or sixteen square feet for all other signs. He could also have one small temporary sign, again, one per property, two if the property was over five acres. That's a maximum of six square feet. So I misspoke, you could actually have two, one large and one small temporary signs. They're only allowed to be up for thirty days. You have to put the date of, when you put it up, on the sign, so I wouldn't have to be notified of that.
So on those sixteen square feet, he could have multiple advertisers on the one temporary sign?
Yes, sir.
You can put multiple things on the, on the small sign and the big sign.
Something four by four is basically sixteen square feet.
Or what's the smaller one, two by two?
It's a six, so three by two.
Three by two.
So you could have one in one.
He's saying without having to get a permit or tell him.
Right, okay. I guess my concern with it is being able to use existing facilities or existing installations that are there, and, you know, it, there just doesn't seem to be a way to address, in a situation, gasoline stations are different as far as advertising needs and requirements than a hair salon, or a typical strip center, or even a grocery store. We work toward impulse, and we have to do things to attract people, and that's all, you know, that's all I'm asking, is to be able to do things to be able to attract, and...
I think we understand, the only, the only thing as a board that we're pressed with, if it's good for the goose, it's good for the gander. So do we, not that it's ever going to happen, but do we want every store to have eighty-one signs? You know what I'm saying?
Right. Well, I had no idea there were eighty-one signs.
Yeah, well, those are little safety signs, too. That's everything, but...
We actually have a section in the code that addresses, addresses gas stations in particular, and Zach will go ahead and read that, so...
It says, "For permitting gas stations, one additional freestanding sign per street frontage shall be permitted for the advertising of gas prices and identification of the gas station only, up to two additional signs per property." And also, there's additional for a drive-through.
And which zone is that?
The commercial zones, B-one, B-two.
What zone would Rutter's be?
B-two, same with Ken.
So it's the same. Has anybody informed Rutter's that, hey, everybody's happy to be, come to our community, by the way?
Absolutely. They actually came to the community outreach meeting.
They did?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
And they supported.
Because Mr. Ken makes a point, you know, gas stations do have a lot of signs. Never, I never thought of that, but...
Well, and again, I had no idea there were eighty-one. I think on, on the structures that I've installed, and was hoping to use, there are three, six, nine, twelve, that total probably less than forty square feet, when you take all twelve of them into consideration. They're, you know, eight, nine, ten inches wide by a foot and a half long, type of thing. But again, it's, it would be nice if there were a way, when you have a, something that's being proposed to a business owner, that there's a way to come and look for an exemption or an exception.
We do, we do understand your position.
Yep, okay. Well, and appreciate the opportunity to speak with you.
Thank you for coming in.
Yep.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Does, do we have any more comments, Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes, thank you. Monument sign, I'm looking at the prohibited signs, and I consistently have a concern about, you know, ten stories or taller, you know, that kind of a thing, you know, three stories or taller type signs. Highway signage, I don't know how we would identify it. I think of the example of the Thurmont Burger King sign, which is...
The moon?
Trying to, yeah, the full moon, trying to be visible from its low position.
So for your first point, was that limiting height?
It's, sure, let's start there.
Sure. Each section of the code does limit height on every single freestanding signs.
Okay.
I think most of it's eight feet, but if you're talking about highway signs, then you need to go to off-premise signs, so that's section eighty.
Working on it?
Do you have a page number for our agenda packet?
Sure, page, well, I'm looking at my page seventeen. Let's see if it's, it's not going to be the same as yours, because I'm looking at my personal.
Is it page forty of the agenda packet? Off-premise signs? Yes, I found it.
Yes, yes, it is.
Page forty.
So, let's see here. As you can see, there are spacing requirements, and the height requirements is C, they're fifteen feet. So if it's an off-premise sign, Rutter's is kind of the, it's a different animal, because they're located on a highway. So they would actually have to get an exemption to have a sign this large, because technically, their property's abut the highway.
Okay.
So it's not technically an off-premise sign. They would be on-premise, so they're going to have to apply for exemption.
Okay, should, do we anticipate them having a sign that will need an application for an exemption?
We don't know.
Okay.
We, yeah, we did not see any of that.
I'm going off-topic, I shouldn't have asked that. Okay, coming back to it. Next question? Okay, to move forward?
Sure, yeah, sure.
Architectural guidelines, as was mentioned, you had made, does that mean we are now going to codify our architectural guidelines? Or how are they to be used? That's what I'm trying to understand.
So it's a document that will use to say, you know, what's historical in the town?
Okay.
What kind of features of a building is historical?
Okay.
So, you know, the sign won't damage and hurt that historic district.
So what we have existing as our architectural guidelines, will that be used, or will that be modified, or will it be a different set altogether?
That will be used.
That will be used, okay. So that's determining materials to not be damaged and structures to not be modified?
Correct.
Do I understand that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay, terrific. All right. I was aware of Mr. Surtick's comments in the media related to internally illuminated signs being considered appropriate, and could you clarify what your remarks from earlier? Because I didn't fully fathom what you were getting at.
Sure. Yep, I can read that.
Sure.
Statement from the planning commission. So they wanted me to tell you, internally illuminated signs should be permitted in the village zone, zoning district. These signs match the historic nature of the town because they originate around the nineteen twenties.
Okay.
Just one. Just one sign. I was just clarifying with him what they were...
A single sign per street frontage? Did I remember that correctly, or?
It depends on the zone. It, it depends on the zone, so which zone, you want to go to the village?
Village, let's start there, if we could.
Let's go to one sixty, I'll go in the Agenda Packet, so, it's just a lot to remember, so...
No, 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 look, you're doing great, fear not, and I appreciate your walking us through this.
Okay, we actually need to go to the, um, general. Okay, so what you want to go to is page thirty-eight of sixty-one. That will tell you what types of signs are permitted, what types of illuminated signs are permitted in each district. As for size, you would then go to, so if, for example, a permit came in, the first thing I would do is go to this table, to see if it's an actually permitted type of sign, then you go to the village zoning district, because that's the zone it's in, and that would be on page fifty-two, which the summary table is found on fifty-four, so, let's see. So, you're wondering how many illuminated signs will be allowed in the village zone? Is that your question?
Sure, or if it's determined by street frontage, similar to what we talked about with gas stations before.
So, it depends on the, on the actual sign, so, for example, wall and awning canopy and a projecting sign, it's one point five square feet per linear foot of building frontage, and then it gives, uh, maximum individuals, so the wall sign could be sixteen foot, square foot, the awning sign, um, it depends on the, uh, square footage again, and the projecting sign's twelve square feet, so yes, they could have one.
Okay, I think we've covered our bases. Mr. Sweeney, thank you, sir.
You're welcome, Commissioner Ritz.
Now, you, you, um, you mentioned street frontage, so if somebody was on the square, then that's considered two streets, correct? Because you got Main Street and Seton.
That's correct.
Okay. That's unique in the corner.
It's a unique corner, yep.
All right. But this, okay, uh, if, I'm sorry, I'm not going to, if, 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 if an establishment's not on the exact, they're on the square, but they're not around the corner, then they can only have one illuminated, internally illuminated sign.
So, they could have a combination of many different signs, so that's one good thing...
I'm just looking at illuminated signs.
Okay, yes, so...
It would just be one.
Yeah.
So, if there are two neon signs, one saying open, and one saying something else, one of them's got to go.
No, the open sign...
I thought the open sign counted as an illuminated sign.
I'll have to look.
I don't remember this. Oh, if it doesn't, that's, that's good, I just, maybe I'm confusing myself.
Just one second, please.
No, that's fine, thank you.
I need to go to something, I'm looking at the wrong section, that's the problem. It's back in the general. It's going to be...
I thought it did.
Uh, here we go, okay, now I got the correct number, so, for, we're talking about neon signs?
Yes.
Page thirty-seven of sixty-one of the Agenda Packet?
Yes.
We specifically regulate neon signage, so the sign type, um, neon signs are only permitted in the form of an on-premise wall sign, so it couldn't, for example, Ken couldn't put a, a neon sign to light up the, um, gas prices, it has to be an actual wall sign, on the wall, so, he could put up a wall neon sign, but not, um...
Or hanging in a window, is that...
That's like a wall sign, yeah.
Okay, but...
And then you can have a maximum, where permitted, one neon sign is permitted per property, um, has to be stationary instead, uh, stead, steady lights.
But if that neon sign happened to just be an open sign, that, that counts as your one illuminated?
No, it doesn't count as your one illuminated, it counts as your neon.
Neon and illuminated are two different things.
I thought, I thought...
One is a light on something, and one is a neon.
Okay, I apologize, so, an internally illuminated sign is just a sign that has light bulbs inside of it?
Correct.
A neon sign is its own unique thing?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Mm-hmm. What's so funny?
Happening at me.
Staff's interaction. Look, somebody said the Lorax twice tonight, I'm in a good mood, okay? This is good.
Any more questions, Mr. Ritz?
No, thank you.
Mr. Buckman?
No, I don't have any questions.
Mr. Blanchard? I have none, also. Uh, thanks staff for the presentation of the evidence. Commissioners that gave them their questions, uh, public comment, which we already had, um, is there any more public comment? Okay, I, I announced that the public, uh, comment is closed, and the record is, for the public hearing is closed.
Sweeney, an emotion?
And now, we're going to have discussion here with each another, is there any more discussion on the matter? So, Commissioner O'Donnell?
Okay, directed towards staff, um, a clarification. In the process of the new ordinances that we're giving consideration to, we're, we're taking the existing ordinances, we would be setting them aside, we'd be replacing them with this updated set of ordinances.
Yes.
Is there a process through which, uh, a business owner can appeal? Is there an appeals process built into this, or do we rely on an existing one?
If there's, if, if they obtained a permit legally, then they will have the ability to appeal it to the Board of Appeals.
Okay.
If, if they did not get a permit for their signage, they cannot appeal it, because they didn't get the permit in the first place.
Okay, um, and for clarification related to grandfathering, how do we qualify something as grandfathered? Does it have a permit from a prior time, or prior to...
Exactly, it has to have a permit prior to today's date, if the board would pass it today.
But, but hold on, the Odd House sign didn't get a permit years and years and years ago, is that not grandfathered?
No, they're grandfathered, because they've been around before the existing sign code has been put into place.
So, grandfathered before the existing sign code in place.
Or, they have a permit that states they're okay with the permit.
From under the old...
Exactly.
Potentially old set.
Correct.
Ordinances.
And that was part of what Amy was doing, taking pictures, to help anybody that's going to be in, could be grandfathered in, so we have a record of it.
Terrific, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sweeney.
Um, Commissioner Ritz, is there any other comment? Any more discussion on, on this?
Me? No. I'm sorry, I thought it was like, I, no, I'm, I'm okay, I'm okay right now, thank you.
Mr. Blanchard? I don't have any more questions. Uh, no more deliberation, I need a motion to accept the sign ordinance as presented.
I make a motion to accept the sign ordinance as presented.
Motion's been made by Commissioner O'Donnell, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Commissioner Blanchard. Is there any more discussion on the sign ordinance?
Yes, sir.
Hearing none, all in favor? Please say aye.
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 Aye. Any nays?
Nay, am I allowed to express my why I'm voting nay, or am I required to, per this statement here? At the bottom.
I'd go after the, I'd suggest after the vote, ask for a comment.
I think it's, if it doesn't get through at all, I guess.
I vote nay.
Uh, two nays?
Yes.
Motion carries three to two.
Mr. President?
Yes.
May I explain my nay vote?
Yes, move, uh, okay.
Yes?
Let me see here, move to, deny ordinance? We didn't deny it. You can go ahead and state in the record why you want to do it, I guess.
Thank you. I admit that a lot of effort went into this, uh, or new sign ordinance, um, I, I know it did, however, I feel it was valuable time wasted. Last time our sign ordinance was revised, there was a lot of animosity in the community, I feel it's going to be more this time. The argument's been made that we need to be a forward-thinking board. I agree, but for different reasons. Regardless of breaking down sections of, by zone to make it easier to understand, this ordinance is full of, you can't do this, this sign is not allowed, this sign can only be this big, then there are the excessive ridiculous fines for violations, we didn't even discuss this evening. If passed, I know this will be enforced, no ifs, ands, or buts, measuring tapes will come out, and I truly feel sorry for those even one square inch over the limit. If a revised ordinance was really needed, why couldn't it have been kept simple? Just list what's allowed. If not noted, then it's not allowed. It's not listed, I should have said. We're Emmitsburg, a small community in northern Frederick County, why can't we consider and pass ordinances that are more community-friendly, and yet provide reasonable safety? I can't vote in the affirmative on a sign ordinance model based on DC-based think tanks, suburbs of Philadelphia, or even the recommendations of the MML and APA. I want a solution that's best for our current residents and business owners, and future residents and business owners. To me, the sign ordinance as written is not that solution, thank you.
Commissioner Buckman?
He put it better than I could have, but I concur.
If, can I make one comment? We did have the blessing of the EBPA, um, the Business Professional Association of the Town, we took all their thoughts and comments into consideration, and if you sit down and compare the sign ordinances side by side, this ordinance is far less stringent than, um, the previous ordinance, and it's upsetting to me to think that, um, a commissioner would believe that we are so unreasonable, that we're going to find somebody for a quarter inch. Staff has made every effort to work with people in this community, and give them extra time to resolve the complaints.
I would, I would welcome the opportunity for town staff, then, to, to turn over a new leaf, and to embrace that, because of what's been going on in the past, it's, it's very, very strict, and I realize, what's good for the goose is good for the gander, but, there's a lot of, there's a lot of animosity and negativity playing by the book, and you can't bend anything whatsoever, you can't consider it. I get that, but the way they're told that, it, it's, 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 it's a little uncalled for.
In our employee handbook, it says, the spirit of the law and the trust of the people, and I don't think we have that.
I would appreciate this comments, and this, this, I, I'd like that had been brought to the mayor's attention, or my attention, before tonight.
It's not directed at you.
I'm not directing...
It's because I'm the manager.
You, you are the town manager, but there's a lot of, there are a lot of complaints, and if you're turning a blind ear to them, that, that's sad, because there, there's a lot that's said.
They're not here tonight?
We're not hearing it.
Um, yeah.
A minute.
That's, that's...
Well, the division between the town and the, it's happened way before you, way before you.
I'm just, I'm off, I'm offering it to you, that there, there's a lot said out there, um, I'm sorry that you don't hear it, um, but I do. I don't know if anyone else does.
It's my job to bring it to my attention.
I tell everyone to go to the town office, to...
I do the same.
Yeah.
But they should have been here tonight for this public hearing, if they did not want the sign ordinance to go through, there should have been a full room.
Under, understood, I, I, I agree.
They didn't have enough time to come here, then they shouldn't even moan and complain about it.
That's true.
Nobody told me to say what I did this evening, um, they were my own words.
Mr. President?
That's my, that's my opinion, of which I'm entitled to.
Just speaking as a liaison to the planning board, having sat through multiple hearings on this, I am willing to back up the work of the planning board, Planning Commission, uh, and work that was done, we did a hear out the EBPA, heard out the people that were, came to the meetings, so I'll stand by the work we did, and the motion that we made to pass, and bring it to the town board, so I want to say that.
My opinion is, if you didn't want it to come here tonight to, to the hearing, to, to stop the vote on it, then, there, there's not one person here, the only person that was here was Exxon, which he doesn't even live in town. I mean, he come to the meeting and sat here this whole time, and...
Thank you for coming.
And, and everything, but you, you don't even live here, I'm, the, the businesses that are live, that are here, none of them's here.
I know Zach went through a lot of work to get a lot of involvement, it's not...
I'm not denying that, and I said a lot of time and effort went into it, I know, I know that it did, I'm, I'm just hoping that, you know, going forward, there are, there are strict, uh, regulations in, in the ordinance for, for sizes, and I just, I just hope that, I just hope things go well, that's all.
Okay, um, that's it for public hearing, I need a motion to close the public hearing, is that what I need now?
I believe we've closed it, sir, I think we moved to the vote to adopt the ordinance outside of the hearing, so, maybe we move on to the next agenda item?
There is no agenda, I'm just setting...
Set the agenda for next meeting.
Setting the agenda for the next meeting?
Yeah.
No, never closed the meeting.
We, we did, we did not close the public hearing, I thought we did.
Are we, are we supposed to close, close the meeting? Okay.
Number six.
Because I know we had the vote to open, and I didn't know we have to vote to close.
I asked, hold on, I, I asked if we needed to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Okay.
You need to make a motion to end the public hearing?
And I was advised, no, and Mr. Sweeney then...
I asked, I thought, yes, I started it.
Right, but, but what I'm saying in concluding it, I thought we had concluded it...
When we voted.
And that's when I asked if we were to take a vote on it or not. Was there, I, I asked, was there a motion necessary to close the public hearing?
Yes, it has to be if we opened it, correct?
Okay, then, maybe I misunderstood what was said, then, because I thought the answer was no at that time, so, how about we do this? Let's get a clarification, okay? So, procedurally, Mr. Sweeney, do you mind if I'm asking this question?
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, sorry.
I'm going to go ahead and ask the question.
Sorry, I will...
I don't have a problem with you answering, no.
So, procedurally, for clarification, do we need to close the meeting, sorry, close the public hearing, and then take the vote?
No, you're fine, if you go ahead and, um, make a motion to end the public hearing.
Okay, and the vote will stand?
Yes.
Okay.
If I may interrupt, you've already taken a motion on the ordinance, that motion was approved by the vote of three to two. There was some additional discussion, apparently that's over, I would call for a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Which I did.
Okay.
And vote on that, once it's adjourned, then if you have further business to report, you can reopen that.
Okay, so the vote's okay in the hearing, that's what I'm trying to get clarification on.
I need a motion to end the hearing, the public hearing on the sign ordinance.
I'll make a motion to end the public hearing.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Buckman, second by Commissioner O'Donnell, all in favor of the me, closing the hearing, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any nays? Motion carries. Now, we have to set the agenda for the next meeting? Thank you.
Thank you.
I know you love coming here, sitting.
The gas station guy getting what he wanted.
Yes. Citizens Advisory Committee.
Do you want to consent agenda?
So, agenda items?
Okay, um...
Yes.
Agenda items from the town, those there.
Okay, I have approval of the street paving contractors for consideration, uh, approval of the firewood policy for consideration, approval of the North Seton Avenue Bridge letter for consideration. There's been complaints that the North Seton Bridge is in bad condition, um, we want it to send a letter.
Yes, it's falling apart.
Um, and finally, on administrative business, appointment of two new members to the Sustainable Community Board for consideration.
Did I have to be on this one, or could go on the consent agenda?
That could be admin business.
Admin?
Administrative business, please.
That'll be, uh, two members to, Mr. Buckman's board.
No, not...
No, this would be the, uh, the committee that reviews mostly the community legacy grants. The, the people that submit for a grant, it goes to a review board.
I do have someone to add to the Citizens Advisory.
Review board. Okay, that's admin, and then, how about Citizens Advisory, could that go on to consent or admin?
Um, I'd just go ahead, since we're doing appointments, just do it under admin, um, if you'll get the name and all the information, to Maddie.
Okay, you don't want to now?
You want it now, Maddie? Yeah, we'll take it now.
Bernard Franklin, um, three, three, four, Mountaineers Way.
Would you say Bernard Franklin?
He's a, um, student admin at the Mount.
Second one?
That's it.
All righty. Is that it for Stair?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell, do you have anything for the?
No, sir.
Commissioner Ritz?
No, I don't, thank you.
Commissioner Buckman, all finished? You don't have any more? Nothing for the main agenda? Commissioner Blanchard?
Nope, I'm good.
I'm also good. Okay, so on the main agenda for September third, we have the street paving contractor consider?
Yes.
Is that for all the streets?
We have, our Director of Public Works keeps a list of the streets that are needed each year and we put it out to bid and we need to get approval.
Firewood policy?
Approval of firewood policy, yes.
North Seton Avenue Bridge is number three?
Yes.
Is that it?
And for the agenda and then the two administrative items.
And we got Citizen Advisory and the other one is for the grant, for legacy grant?
No, the first one is for the two new members for the Sustainable Community Board. And then your second one would be a part, appointment of Bernard Franklin to the Citizens Advisory Committee.
Is there's board members from here for local?
I'm sorry?
The board members from town?
Yes.
Do you have their names?
No, the mayor will have the appointments.
Oh, okay. Anything else for the agenda? Need a motion to accept agenda as, as presented?
I make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Motion's been made by Commissioner O'Donnell. Second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Ritz. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. I need to sign anything? Do I need any park commissions or anything to sign? Meeting and then?
You'll have three of them.
I need a motion to close the meeting for tonight?
I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
Motion's been made to close the town meeting by Commissioner Buckman. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Blanchard. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any nays? Motion carries. Please, thank you for coming to the meeting tonight.
Totally timed.
It is ten thirty?
Three.
Three.